And she said at the Planning Commission, and I thought, yes, she stands over there. I'm in every video she takes. So I try to watch her, my facial expression.
Oh, I don't have poke flesh with her. Because I call her out at the meetings and search, and I had one. It was hilarious. I was at Baby Crocker Restaurant with my mom. And this lady walked up, and she said, "You're Commissioner Doby?" I said, "Yes, ma'am." She said, "I want to tell you," she said, "I might not agree with everything you say, Mom," said, "but most of the time, I kind of do." I said, "Well, I appreciate that." She said, "You know, I kind of enjoy watching them meet themselves. It's all good," said, "until Edna goes to talk, and then it goes downhill." I looked at her, I said, "Do what?" She said, "Oh, I worked with her for years, Nick," said, "I'm a teacher."
Yep.
You've got to really talk into them for it to be happy, I think. Three different agendas, Tom. Which ones are right? Got three different agendas.
No, they're all the same. You just mark and follow what it is.
Yes.
At least got to mark it that way.
Okay. That's today. That's what all this big stuff is. That's under the workshop.
Get some of both of them, because it's the same agenda after I just told you that.
Turn on my mic on here. Good Monday afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hamlin County Planning Commission on this beautiful October Monday. Call to order, election of officers. We have a little household thing we've got to do. We need to elect a chairman, and a vice chairman, and a secretary.
Can I nominate? Can I nominate?
Sure.
You want me to do all of them?
We can do them all at one time.
Something for Edgar Gray for chair, and Charlie Anderson, vice chair, and Bill Hicks for secretary.
All the members here are the nominations? Any comments, questions? Take a vote. All in favor of Ms. Hale's motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion does carry. Thank you, Ms. Hale. Mr. Gray and I will swap places.
Well, good afternoon, as Charlie said, and welcome to our planning board, Planning Commission, also the BZA Board as well. Welcome, everybody. Just a few things. Let me ask you that, first of all, I want to say thank you for everybody showing up. I didn't know I was going to get elected to this position, but thanks for coming and supporting us. Once again, I appreciate all the citizens of Hamlin County who get involved and care. I want to say thank you to John Hofer. He's retired, and I think he's enjoying himself somewhere, and thank you for the job that he did for all his time. Thank you to our commission. Thank you to our new member, Tim Wild. Thank you to the people who work in our office, Tommy Misty, and Daryl, and all that do mighty work. We've got a small office. We had a change in our county planner, so we'll be, we're in the process of looking for a county planner. But Josh is here with us today to help us. He's from the city. And just a few things. This, you are sitting in a courtroom. We're not exactly a court until we get to BZA, but we are respectful of each other. Each other has, each of us have different ideas, different opinions, and a lot of emotions. But let me ask you to keep that all in control today. We do have security here. If it becomes a point, this, you know, if you want to, if you want to cheer, you want to clap, or you want to jeer, or you want to something, they've got a ballgame here Friday night. You can come to, or they'll have one in Knoxville on Saturday. Otherwise, I expect you to be nothing but gentlemen and kind ladies to everyone who comes forward to present something. And let me remind you that this commission sets here to protect the safe and health, safety and the health of the citizens of Hamlin County it was created. We don't make up these building codes and rules that we have. They were adopted here in 1990. They were written in, I mean, 2018. They were written prior, and we go by those to give some systematic protection. If you look around in the state of Tennessee, some counties did not adopt these policies, and they have a lot of problems as they're growing. So these things are to aid us and keep guardrails and to help us, and we try to be fair to everyone. You may leave here today thinking we didn't try to be fair, but I'll tell you, each one of us spends a lot of time looking this over, and also want to say thank you to those who took time to send an email, or a text, or a call. I try not to be swayed by opinion. I try to be swayed by facts and what our guidelines and rules say. So, once again, look over me today, because I'm not sitting in this seat to fill in or do anything, so we're going to have a wonderful day. We start our, we start our, for you that are new into the courtroom, we start our meeting off with public comment. And you can come forward, and let me ask you today that if you have something to say, that it not be about any of the cases, or any of the thing that's coming up, so we can give other people an opportunity just to speak to, about anything that's on their mind. And let me ask you to direct, if you come forward to speak, give your name and where you live, your street, and also focus it all on me. Don't condemn anybody around these tables, or condemn anybody in the office. If you've got to say something hard, say it to me. I'm going to listen. I'm going to take it. And, but I hope that you would all say nothing but positive things about everybody in this room after today. All right, so let's begin our meeting with our minutes comments. So if somebody's got something they want to speak, you can come to the microphone now. You've got three minutes to talk.
I'm Leo Shaloot. I live in the Seven Oaks subdivision. My address is 5665 Chestnut Oak Drive. I have came to this commission a couple times, the road commission, also the Hamlin County Commissioners. I have been battling this for 10 years, about the flooding that's in Seven Oaks, how the streets have been paved several times, and there is no curb. Within the last month, Commissioner Chairman Bobby Hahn has gotten involved, had been to my property, evaluated, and in fact, he's been there four times now. The last communication that he's told me is that the road commission is going to replace the culvert and raise the curbs and clean out the other curbs. So it is now a month. On June 6, this is probably our 12th flooding that we've had at our home, where our crawl space has been flooded. We are now noticing black mold on our walls in our bedroom. Our deck is collapsing. The water has came into our house and destroyed our floors. I have brought this up so many times for 10 years, and all I'm getting is just to appease me, pacify me. This is what we're going to do, and nothing's going to be done. I don't know what it's going to take. I go to every meeting to let y'all know that there is a serious problem. Even in our ravine, we have trees that are, the roots are exposed, and they're going to fall down, and our land is being eroded. In fact, I even had the assessors came out and evaluated, and they have agreed and reduced my property tax by 25%. And I got, and given the names and addresses of the total of 13 property owners that's on that ravine that's being affected by this stormwater. And they're going to look into reducing their property tax, because the value of the homes and that neighborhood is being demolished by this floodwaters that is voluntarily neglected with the streets being paved so much and the culverts not being cleaned out. But they said they're going to fix it. Well, I'm on G. I'm waiting on O. I just want the county to become Nike, and just do it. Let's get it done. Let's get it fixed before the next flooding. I'm trying to not have Seven Oaks flood again. I just want to bring it to y'all's attentions and plead with you to expedite this, to, let's get this fixed, please. That's all I'm asking. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Gray, my name is Steve Kuriasis. I reside at 1935 Seven Oaks Drive in the Seven Oaks subdivision. I'm just up here, first of all, to just make a point of clarification. Myself and a number of other residents from Seven Oaks are here today specifically, not only about the problem that the other gentleman from Seven Oaks just spoke to, which is a part of a statement of objection that we have previously filed today, but this has to do with the 1490 Collinson Farm road plat that's up for approval before the commission today. Will I get a chance to speak then when that plat is presented?
Let me, let me say to you, and thank you for asking that, and you're very polite to do, when plats are approved, are presented, final plats are presented to us for approval, they meet criteria that are found in our building codes, so we check those off. Our say is not final, as far as if they can go ahead and do a subdivision. Our say is, it meets these requirements that the state has authorized us to examine. So therefore, we do not have a feedback from the residents of Seven Oaks or any contiguous. We don't have that feedback. We did get your packet of information, but we don't open the floor for that conversation because it's not a, it's not a debate kind of situation.
Okay. Where does it get presented, where that debate can be had, if you can inform me of that?
Well, that, that's, that's a matter that would not be in this court.
Is it before the entire board?
No. No, it'll be, it'll be more of a legal situation if you have anything, legal stance, yes.
Well, the legal stance, or the standing that we have is that we directly abut, Seven Oaks directly abuts that subject property. And I believe, and I thought that we had...
Sir, do you understand that you have a property line between you and that development, and your property rights stop where somebody else's starts? So those are all legal amplifications, and let me just ask you that, we, we understand, but we, our job is not to debate that in this arena. Ours is to look at the plat and make sure it meets all the criteria for its subdivision. So I appreciate, appreciate you coming forward, though.
So then, I mean, just want to make sure that I understand that basically, if it has to get into a legal type of situation, we are talking about filing something actual legal and debating this apparently in court.
That, that would be one avenue, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Gwen Holden. I live at 8150 West Point Drive. Used to live at 2343 Supper Springs Road. That was my family's property for years, and I have been trying to get things cleaned up out in the community of Row Junction, and I'm still going to do that, even though I don't live there anymore, because I am concerned about people's health and what they're having to live around. It is filthy. It is nasty, and it needs to be cleaned up. We've got businesses out there that are operating that don't even have business licenses and don't care to even get any. They know they can do whatever they want to do, and that's what they do. I don't like it. I'm a taxpayer. I pay taxes. I pay taxes dearly out there. I keep my place clean. Now, I've got a problem with a stepdaughter of my son's that has chickens and old nasty chicken coops, and she's got them close to the road. You would think the road department could do something about those nasty coops, but you know what? They won't. I've been coming up here for 30 years. 11 years at county commission, 11 years at planning commission, and I still have not got nothing done about cleaning up. Hamlin County is nasty. Some parts of it is nasty, and it's bad for your health. They even told me, if I didn't like it, move. So I did. But I kept my property. Maybe somebody else wants to live in it, but I don't, and my son's moving out now because he's tired of it. It's sad, and we've had that property in our family for over 70 years. My mom and dad went up north and worked to get that property. They couldn't even get a job down here to get a house. It's sad. I tell God all the time, vengeance is mine, thus saith the Lord. I will repay. Not me. And I know it's just earthly stuff, but I believe in cleanliness, because I told God, if it's going to be nasty in heaven, I didn't want to come. He said, "Don't worry, it won't be."
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lisa Swager, 3655 Chucky River Road. I just want to talk about Springvale right now. The traffic with the dump trucks are ridiculous. They drive so fast. On one side of the street, there's a drop of at least five, six feet. So I have experience with a CDL license to know this is not safe for young kids to be driving. There's points already without anybody, big dump trucks, that I have to stop and go slow right there, but it's scary. It's scary to have those trucks go as fast as they do. In addition to that, I have a neighbor, we got two extra acres she wanted to sell us, and the stipulation was not to build behind our house. And I agreed with it in writing, basically so she could have her privacy. We live in a nice community. It's beautiful across the street, and we don't want it to change. We don't want the quarry.
Okay, ma'am, we, we don't address that at this time.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
And that's all I can say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your participation, and we will, we'll pass that where it goes. A lot of those items that were said don't, the planning commission doesn't handle, but we will get it to where it goes. Thank you so much. Before you call this meeting to order, before you commissioners, we, we have the minutes from our previous meeting of August to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I read all the minutes. They appear to be correct. My motion through the minutes for the month of August 2025.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay, let's begin our meeting tonight. Just give me just a second. I'll make sure I have one ahead. Thank you, Charlie. All right, for us tonight, we have, our first is a request for MAC materials for properties, 3895 McClister Road and 3990 Chucky River Road from, from A1 to I1. As many of you know, this became before the board prior, but if there's a spokesman for this, please come forward and state your name.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. My name is Ben Mullins. I'm an attorney in Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm here representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Before you start, let me ask you a question. You were here before this planning commission before. I believe you were here before.
I wasn't personally here, but my clients were.
Okay, MAC was here before, and it was, the verdict came, and I was just curious, the opportunity to go further to the county commission was made available. Why, why are we coming back here again?
Well, at that time, I recall, and Mr. Carlisle and Mr. McQueen are here, as far as, Matt Saxon and Matt Evans, they were here before. My understanding was, one of the primary concerns was whether the property could even get the permits required from the state through TDEC to even be able to be used as a quarry despite the local approvals. So what way they chose to do at that time was go back, make all the applications through the state, and they've obtained all the permits they need through the state of Tennessee to be able to operate a quarry on it. So now it comes back before this body on the, on a zoning matter. They need to get the zoning to be able to move forward with the site plan and other local approvals. But because that was a big unknown at that time, they wanted to make sure that the, the property would qualify where the state standards to be operated as a quarry before we move forward.
Which, which the state standards are you referring to?
I'm referring to getting the, the permits for the air quality, the MPDES, and the, the things that the state controls regarding the quarry. So they went back, went through that process. It was a public process. The neighbors that are behind me here, a lot of them participated in that as well, and so they have all the, the necessary permits they need to move forward through the state.
Okay, thank you. Let me just word to the courtroom, in this situation, they came before, and, and you have six months to petition to the county commission if, if some favorable ruling from this planning commission. So just give that word. If you don't read the rules all the time, you don't, you don't have a clue with that. So anyway, but going forward, today is about petition, your petition is for exactly?
Yeah, we are asking to rezone 57 acres of a total tract that is 361 acres at 3895 McClister and 3990 Chucky Road from A1 to I1 for the purpose of operating a quarry on that site.
So what has changed from your prior time here?
Well, again, we went back through the state to make sure we got the permits.
I understand that, yes.
The, the request for this is 57 acres of a larger parcel, and a lot of that, the reason that was done was in order to make sure that we are only asking for the, the amount that we need, and we can maintain control over the surrounding parcels to make sure there's a, a buffer to help mitigate some of the impacts that the neighbors are undoubtedly concerned about.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments that you have?
Well, if, you know, I don't know if I have three minutes to...
Oh, you got, you got more than three minutes.
Okay. I understand, and, and I haven't heard, I, first time I've been here, I do a lot of this work in Knox County. I don't know if staff has made a recommendation on this or not. I had understood that staff, the planning staff, was going to recommend approval of the rezoning before this body. I don't know if that, that is the case. I am operating today as if that is the case, that staff is recommending approval for this. And as you mentioned, you know, even with the rezoning, your role today, the planning commission's role today is an advisory role. You advise to county commission, and county commission has a chief legislative body, makes the ultimate decision as to move forward. So your role today, as you explained before, is really more to look at the standards for the rezoning, make sure that it meets those appropriate standards. It checks the box, if you will. And, and I'll say, you know, local governments, you know, like Hamlin County, you know, their law, you know, their, their authority to regulate properties is dictated by the state. State passed enabling statutes, and your, your laws, your authority to do that is limited by that. It's also limited because in common law, you can do whatever you want to do with your property, so the, the courts have instructed us that, you know, you're supposed to, these laws are supposed to be strictly construed to the benefit of the property owner's free use of their property. Whether this is a legis, this is a legislative action. A little later, I think you have a couple of plats. Those are administrative actions, but the, the Tennessee Supreme Court has told us that the standards are essentially the same. You have broad discretion when it comes to these matters, but that discretion has to be exercised within the existing standards. And that's why you have professional staff that looks at the standards and makes recommendations as to whether it should be rezoned or not. And we believe in this case that we meet the requirements for this to, to be rezoned. You know, undoubtedly, we have a, a lot of people here who have concerns. I've seen the signs outside. There's, there's people wearing stickers behind me, and I, those concerns are sincere. I don't want to minimize that. Whenever change occurs, change is hard. But the courts have also instructed us that speculations, fears, and concerns of an aesthetic nature, you know, however sincere, aren't the basis for denial of a petition like this. You really have to look at whether you meet the, the standards. It's not a function of this board to conduct a public referendum as to whether something should be done or shouldn't be done. And I'm saying all that more for the record than anything else, because, you know, this, this is something that is likely to be debated in the future, certainly before county commission. Specific to some of the concerns that the, the neighbors have raised, and I'm happy, Mr. Carlisle, Mr. McQueen, I are happy to come back up after some of those concerns were raised, and maybe answer questions about how we can address that. This is step one in the process. Once you get the rezoning in place, then you have to move forward with getting your site plan in place. There's a lot of concerns about traffic, a lot of concerns about stormwater. I'm sure those are the things that, that you hear. Those things that can be addressed as we move through the permitting process, as we apply the, the codes that have been adopted, to make sure that we're, we're meeting those requirements. We can control the traffic for a large degree to make sure that the traffic is turning south and not north, so we can minimize any, any traffic towards the, probably the, the, the parts of the road that aren't quite as appropriate. Again, we also have the entire parcel under control, so we make, can make sure we create enough of a buffer around the surrounding neighbors to where the, the impacts that they're concerned about will be minimized. Yeah, I think at the last meeting, Mr. Drennan behind me here raised the issue of spot zoning. I don't know if that's still going to be an argument that they raised, but that is something that we did speak to, the, my clients did speak to the county attorney. We don't believe it's spot zoning. I can tell you why we don't believe it's spot zoning. Mr. Drennan's a, a very good attorney. He can tell you why he thinks it is spot zoning. Attorneys get paid to argue about things all the time, but I would ask you maybe look to the, the people who aren't getting paid by the, who want to get something approved or want something not to be approved, and ask what their opinion is on that. And, and I would ask that guide you in your, in your decisions today. Ultimately, this is a public benefit. It doesn't just benefit my clients in, in operating a quarry, but it's, it's a public benefit to Hamlin County as a whole. Hamlin County has 68,000 residents. Hamblin County has 68,000 residents. It's a growing county. There are ongoing construction projects, ongoing road projects, and only having really one local quarry in town in order that can control what the prices are for aggregate that is needed for those projects, it's needed for road improvement, that's needed for construction projects, needed for cement, needed for sand, needed for everything that makes us, you know, operate as a county and grow as a county. And that's not good for business because they can dictate the price. Having competition is good for business. Having an option that can help regulate the price per ton for aggregates is an option that is a benefit to the county in addition to the tax revenue, the severance taxes, the property taxes that will come along for that. There's a reason why there's a quarry south of Interstate 81 and why we want to put one north of 81. That's because there's a major limestone deposit of resources that run right along the interstate. I suspect that back in the 1950s when they were looking where to put the interstate, they tried to follow those resources so it's easier and less expensive to build the roads. So, you know, it's not like most uses, you try to plan where you put them. When you're dealing with something that's dependent on natural resources, you have to follow where the resources are. And it's, you know, the zoning to the south is still ag zoning because it never needed to be rezoned because it was grandfathered in before 1990 when the zoning code was adopted. But your zoning code requires industrial uses, which is why we're asking only for a very small portion of it because we too don't want to see improper uses on that. This is appropriate for a quarry. It has a resource for a quarry and that's why we're asking for the zoning that we are asking for. So I'd ask that you rely on the people that Hamblin County is paying to make these evaluations, whether or not it meets the requirements for rezoning and that you vote to approve it tonight. And we have representatives from our geotechnical engineers as well that did a lot of the work on the front end for the state. They can talk about water resources, can talk about other things that might come up during the concerns. We're happy to answer any questions anybody may have tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me ask to hear from one spokesman from the other side.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Doug Drennan. I represent Mark Fullington and a number of property owners. I was here back in August of 2023 regarding this matter. A couple of things I would say, we're at least, I'm not aware if staff has actually formally rendered any kind of a recommendation yet. If that has happened, I'm not aware of that yet. That's the first thing I would say. The second thing I would say is the question that was asked by the chairman is a good one. Has anything changed? Short answer, no. Nothing has changed. The only thing that has changed, and as it is the practice sometimes with folks that want a property rezoned industrial use, they say, the state says we're good. We've got our permits. I had sent you guys a package where TDEC specifically addresses this. The division's authority under these permitting program is limited to the quality of water discharged. It does not have jurisdiction or authority over zoning and cannot consider zoning as a part of the application process. This permit, the MPDES permit, does not impart a right to mine. It does not provide the state's approval for the placement of or zoning of a mine site. It does not supersede any local or county rules or regulations. Point blank period. State permits have nothing to do with whether or not the county commission ultimately, depending on the recommendation of this body one way or the other, has anything, it has nothing to do with whether or not the county rezones it. This is legislation. I differ with Mr. Mullins. The standards are different. This is not the approval of a site plan. This is not the approval of a permit where, as the chairman had just spoke to a fellow there publicly, you have a certain set of standards. They meet the standards. They get it. This is legislation. This is changing the zone of a particular piece of property. It is a totally different standard than whether or not somebody actually meets that checklist. Also, and that had to do with whether or not this body, I think the question was asked back in August of whether or not the commission was compelled to recommend a rezoning like as it would a site plan. The short answer is an unequivocal no. With respect to whether or not it is spot zoning, this commission will recall Lori Matthews, back then, had rendered three different opinions. The first opinion was, let me see if I can find that to quote it. Staff would generally classify this request as spot zoning. She pointed out that and confirmed there's no industrial zoning in close proximity with the properties. She also indicated that this property, as everybody knows, is heavily forested. And I want to also focus this commission on the fact that this is not a rezoning of a quarry. This is rezoning to I1, an industrial footprint in a sea of agricultural property. This is a footprint. Mr. Mullins is a very good lawyer. I've known Mr. Mullins a while. I will tell you this, he knows, just like MAC Materials knows, that once that industrial footprint is established, it is much, much easier to expand that industrial footprint once it exists. And they know that. We submitted an exhibit that showed the ultimate plan for this property, which is the mining and quarering of 361 acres. That was a lease. It's recorded in your register of deeds office. That is, 57 acres is the tip of the iceberg, point blank period. And they can do anything that is permitted in I1. And this would be an industrial footprint there in the middle of agricultural property. Again, I would stress to this body, and I appreciate my time, is that the chairman also made a good point with respect to what the board is formed for and what it's supposed to do. The purpose of the zoning code is to protect the health, safety of the county, and the safety of the county's residents and their properties for providing a tool to ensure safe and orderly growth. This certainly is not that. This rezoning would change the entire face of the community out there, which is, again, an absolute ocean of agricultural properties. I would also point out with respect to the, we had pointed out a number enlisted, and I won't go into them, this commission's decision, as well as the county commission's decision, can be based on any number of factors. That's why the legal standards are different. When passing legislation, if any rational basis supports the approval or the denial of legislation with respect to zoning, then it will be upheld with respect to the courts. And we respectfully ask that this body recommend not to rezone this property from A1 to I1.
Thank you. Planning Commission, do you have any questions of either parties? Do you want to hear from either party again? Any questions? Is there anybody here that feels they would like to speak additionally? Just, let's see, I've got one coming from the back there. Yes. You got three minutes, please.
All right, thanks, sir. I apologize in advance. I'm not a big public speaker.
But your name is?
Will Spaniel.
That's very good. And your address is?
2736 Springvale Road.
Thank you.
So I'm in opposition of rezoning for several reasons, but I won't get into all of them. Basically, we moved here somewhere around three years ago into agriculture land so that we could uphold the agriculture in the area. We have a small farm raising cattle and we do a regenerative farming. And we tend to build the soil up and make it better rather than letting washouts erode it away and quarries destroy it. I'm a family of me and my three family members and one on the way. We want to maintain and grow up in a good agricultural area that we don't have to worry about industrialization happening close to us. We want to just maintain it as a farmland area.
Thank you very much. Anybody from MAC Materials want to speak?
Hello. I'm T. Philip Carlisle. I live at 7110 Waterfront Terrace. Lifelong resident of Hamblin County. I would just like to say that we do appreciate everyone being here today. It is definitely a reasonable concern for the rezoning that's at hand. The last time we were here, there were a couple, there were several issues that were brought up and we worked through most of those and explanation of zone traffic and our intentions and whatnot, concerns with different roadways, concerns with bridge specs and so forth. We dug through those informations and worked the information out to show that everything was substantial enough to handle what we were intending to do. It was clear that the last two remaining concerns were just a statement. There were the fear of industrial spread and then could this be a quarry if it were to be rezoned? We spent numerous months, as you can tell, you know, we've not been sitting on our hands. We've been working at this aggressively since we left last time. Numerous studies, there'd been, I think there was concern last time on why we hadn't applied for a state permit with the price of the state permit. And the price of the permit was just the scratch of the surface. We spent substantial time and resources in getting to where we are today to make sure that this is appropriate for the area and that it is substantial enough to last for a very long time. We have backed up our zoning size to 57 acres instead of the entire 400 or so acres that exist on the entire properties. The reason in doing so is it does create a agricultural buffer around the zoning that we're asking for. What that does, it leaves the power in the county's hands. If time comes and we do need an expansion at that point, it leaves the power in the county's hands to verify that we've been good stewards of the county. We've done what we've said and we've done everything that we're supposed to do and everything that we've committed to. Traffic, it will be designed. We have numerous ideas, but I know that today's not the day to really discuss that, but we have intentions and plans that we will move forward with if we, when we get past this zoning issue. The. The, just wanted to say that, you know, as a lifelong resident of Hamblin County, we, I do want what's best for Hamblin County. The concerns of the area are 100% legitimate and we do definitely understand. There's a humongous impact with competition in the area. There is no competition. And we do haul rock from outside of the area. Any contractor or utilizer of that stone can tell you that what we're fighting is substantial difference in price when you do go outside of Hamblin County. When you go outside of Hamblin County, your prices dive tremendously. The problem with bringing those resources in are two things. You're spending money outside of Hamblin County. Number two, the trucking cost that it takes to get into Hamblin County. So you're back left to square one. That's why the prices haven't changed so much. Like Mr. Mullins said today, I would just appreciate everyone considering our intentions and that we are from Hamblin County and we do want what's best for the county.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay.
My name is Mark Fullington. I live at 4535 McClister Road. Just right at the Vulcan material gate. I'd like to speak a little bit. I had some stuff prepared, but I'm really not a speaker. It's come in my mind about the rock prices and Mr. Carlisle, Mr. McQueen, just mentioned. You know, yes, you can go outside the county and buy rock at a cheaper price. The time you figure your haul bill in is just almost about as the same as, he's right about that too, is what you pay at Vulcan. But, you know, these are smart businessmen. They didn't, they didn't just fall off a turnip truck. If they get a quarry started and get it going, you know, they're probably going to sell their rock at market price. I don't think they're going to give away profits. A smart businessman wouldn't. You know, most of the supporters for this whole project don't live in our community. They live somewhere else. I don't think if they were telling the truth that they would actually want a mining facility in their backyard. We have 180 property owners surrounding this area that they have sectioned out there, that they have leased. And if you drive through McClister Road, down Springvale Road, back down Chucky River Road, you're going to see a lot of those signs that you see out here in front. And I'll let me say, folks, for the record, I don't know who put those signs up, but that wasn't our group out here at the courthouse. Anyway, people out there are concerned for their homes. They're concerned and yeah, they don't know. They've got a lot of opinions on what might happen because they don't know. And this is where your job as planning commissioners, you weed out the problems and so forth and so on and do, make a good, clear decision on our behalf because I do not feel like this is the proper thing for our community. As Mr. Drennan said, it is spot zoning. You're putting an island of industrial that could very well expand very easily. They gave their cards away at the First July meeting when they wanted to rezon 400 acres to begin with. Then they dropped it to 200 acres. Now it's 57 acres. So they know that they can piggyback off that 57 acres. There's a genuine safety hazard right there on McClister Road, the half a mile from the Vulcan Gate up to their entrance. It's three feet shorter, the road is three feet narrower than it is from 160 to the Vulcan Gate. Also about several years ago, I've lived there, my house for 40 years, the road got so bad that the county had to widen the road and they had to add about three inches of asphalt to the road. And it actually has made the road higher than my driveway. When you come out of the driveway, it's above. And they had to add it for the weight of the trucks. And now they're running a lot of these tractor trailer dump trucks now. I just buy my house every day. A lot of folks have said, well, Mark, what do you care? There's already a quarry at your house and they're driving by you every day. Why do you care so much about another quarry? Well, I don't want it for my neighbors that live up the road. Those people coming out into, having to pull out their driveways into the road for the trucks. I've gotten used to it. It's like living next to a railroad track. But it's like, kind of like this. If you're out in a lake on a boat and you got a hole in the boat and you're dipping water out, do you put another hole in the boat? Or do you keep dipping water?
Thanks, Mr. Fullington.
Thank you.
Okay. You've heard from, you've heard prior, months prior, you've heard today. You've heard from testimony. Let me say thank you to everyone who has spoken. Thank you for your facts. Thanks for your kindness and how you spoke. I appreciate that. Panel, is there any other question you'd like to ask or get something cleared up or any motion you'd like to make?
Mr. Chairman, can I have a floor, please?
Please.
I want to thank everyone for being here, all the citizens, MAC Co. Just want you to understand and appreciate the work that you all have done in it, the community has done in it. But as this commission sits here, they have to make a decision based on the facts. And someone is going to leave this room today that's not going to be happy. Now, if you look at the pros for this, I'm quite sure I want to see business boom in Hamblin County. Do we pay more for rock than we probably should? Well, I get mine from Granger County. I, I know I don't want to say that, but I have to, because Vulcan, I live probably within seven, eight miles, and they overcharge me, I'm quite sure, for bringing rock to my place. But I'm not sure that it would be that much cheaper if there's another quarry there. I know there's been a lot of work done on this, a lot of permitting done on this. You go to the left side of this, the road is the issue, the noise is the issue, the blasting will probably be an issue in the future. They just, they just a lot of things that is for it, and there's a lot that's against it. But I want you to close the book on what I just said, because that had, this has nothing to do today with a quarry. And I said this in my last motion. This has to do with zoning to I-1. It opens up four hundred acres. We can say fifty-seven all you want to, but once you open that can of worms, you will never get them back in that can. Please, please. So I want everybody to understand that if the quarry don't succeed, and they walk away from it because the landowners are not here today, and they walk away from it, you can't take it back to agriculture. It's a hole there. Okay? So the question is, do we, as a county planning commission, are we in the business of developing industrial park? And I would say we are not. And my motion would be that we deny the rezoning today.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, you have a motion? Is there a second? Second, motion is second. Any comments or questions, clarity?
I've got a question, Paco, Mr. Chairman. Since our planner is no longer with us and such, I just want to ask Josh, do you all have a recommendation on this?
If you recall at the original meeting, Lori did make a positive recommendation for the rezoning, so that is a place.
Did that cover the spot zoning issue? It's just, it's confusing.
The interpretation was that there's a existing industrial use to the south adjacent to this property.
Did I answer your question, Tom?
Pretty much, pretty much. It's still not a lot of gray area as well, but it's, my thing is, it's like both of these attorneys said, there's law that pertains to this, there's law that governs this. And I'm just wanting a little guidance as to the, the way people see the law. On the county commission, when we do a beer permit, if we turn it down because of moral reasons, they go and they sue us in court, and then we pay their court costs, their attorney fees, and they still get their beer permit as long as everything is legal. This could be an expensive bill for Hammond County if they are wanting something legal. Does that mean that I'm going to vote that way? No. I'm just wanting some clarification, so I can have something in my mind as to is this or is this not? With that, we have our county attorney here. I just want to ask Mr. Capps, before we do the vote, is this in that situation, Mr. Capps, where there...
Mr. Doughty and commissioners, there are lawsuits tried every day over these issues. This is dissimilar. It is not similar to the beer permit issue.
Thank you. That's what I was wanting, is to hear if that was...
And certainly, the parties have an opportunity to litigate this matter. If, if the county commission, if the vote be against this rezoning, the, there can be an appeal, and the county commission will ultimately determine it. And then if the party wants the court to decide at that point, then that's what will happen.
Thank you. That's what I was wanting, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Capps. Thank you, Tom. Any, anybody else? We have, I'm sorry.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
What, or ask Josh, would you explain again why this would not be spot zoning? I'm sorry about that.
I'm trying to go back to Lori, because at the original meeting, she viewed the parcel lines going to the center line of the right of way. So you have industrial use to the south, that, so the industrial zoning to the north would be appropriate.
Okay. So if that is the case, we're running this from road to road, then you're opening up more farmland from that entrance on one thirteen to come along and do the same thing to agriculture.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. There's a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor say to deny.
Yes, do a roll call.
All in favor will say to deny, say yea, and opposed likewise.
I just want to clarify that a yes vote will be in support of the denial.
Yes. Okay. Tommy, do the roll call.
Yes, sir.
Edgar Gray.
No, I mean, excuse me. I'm voting against the, I'm denying.
That's a yes, yes, okay.
I made that very clear, didn't I?
Charles Anderson.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Tim Wild. Bill Hicks.
Yes.
Kay Hale.
Yes.
Tom Doughty.
Yes. It's unanimous.
So if the plan commission finds unanimous, so let that be in the record. And let me ask you at this point, that if you're a party to this, that you, we have two more plats to approve. We're going to take a small break. Don't get up just yet. We'll take a small break and allow you to exit the courtroom. We have two more plats to consider, then we'll take a break, and then we have some zoning appeals to consider. So let me thank you again. Be safe and be good neighbors to each party as you leave today. Thank you, and you can leave. But if you're on the docket for the next ones, please stay. Let me ask you to go ahead and leave the courtroom so we can continue, please. Please exit.
Hey, buddy.
Yeah.
For me to ask you a question?
Sure.
This piece of land, the records I'm looking at says this property is on C1 in our area. How did I find out?
The planning commission, not him. God, Richard.
The guy in the red shirt?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, this would be, this would be R1. These things, the records don't show this as, they show this as C1.
This whole block is all...
That would be, that would be in some kind of something old, I'd say. We go by, well, I don't know if the county has tax records, it's state things. Yeah.
I can bring it up online. It shows specifically this property, it's on C1.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that would be bad. Well, we don't allow sub division to be C1.
Exactly, exactly. That's what I'm saying. When, if it's showing this as being C1, when did it become R1? Was it done twenty years ago?
I don't know that it shows a C1. We've always been...
I can bring it up online.
Yeah, well, I mean, those, like I say, I can talk to the state.
Look, I'm still on this one, but it's...
You don't know about phone without...
If you think that phone, that feels a lot of air, just...
He's got, yeah. Yeah, no, I told you. Thank you, everyone. We will pick up and continue in our planning and commission agenda. Our next item will be, excuse me, I've got allergies to drain like crazy, so if I go get something to drink, you'll understand. Final plat and subdivision approval for Barnstone Subdivision fourteen ninety Collison Ford Road. Is anyone in here representing this action? Barnstone Subdivision?
Hello. T. Philip Carlisle.
You're back?
I'm back, yeah. Yep. Seventy-one ten Waterfront Terrace. We have a piece of property that we're looking to subdivide into thirteen tracks. The purchase of the, the purpose of the purchase of this property was, I have three little girls, seven, eleven, and sixteen, that like to deer hunt, ride four-wheelers, and things like that. So the asking price of the property was a little more substantial than what we wanted to give for just a recreational use property, I guess. So the lots along the road there are to help alleviate some of that expense. So our full intention is to keep three larger tracks, two that are substantial, one that's about an acre and a half or two acres, I believe, there, lot number three. But we plan to keep those three larger tracks there just for personal use. We have zero intentions this time to move forward with anything whatsoever. And I know, of course, if we did do anything, that would have to come back to you all and so forth. But right now, it's just the road frontage lots to try to ease some of that expense to our prestige personally.
Mr. Carlisle, let me make sure, lot five, lot four, lot three?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
You're requesting one through thirteen?
Correct.
Leaving out three, so actually you're looking for twelve? Is that right?
We're looking for thirteen, one through thirteen, but we're, we plan to retain three through five. And if you see the soils maps, we actually only have one septic system per tract approved on those tracks right now currently. So that helps substantiate that there are going to remain three large tracks.
So, so actually, you're, you've got ten lots that you would build, is that correct? Out of the thirteen?
Yeah. We could actually build all thirteen with the septic's already approved, but it would just be thirteen of them. There's no subdivision design or anything.
And actually, and actually, excuse me, excuse me, but lot seven is not intended to be built. It's a septic, is that designated? Is that what you're saying here?
Build it, you have to build on the backside of that lot and bring the septic to us to that designated location. That's the only space on that lot that's acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Carlisle? You have before you the final plat with signatures.
Do you question the soil scientist, Brian Murphy, who did not sign up? I mean, I'd like to see a signature on that.
Yes, sir. I know it went to TDEC for a special review. He had trainee, the TDEC trainer, I guess, best way to put it, had new TDEC officials on site, so he could help review the soils that were mapped out by the soil scientist. And we can make sure we resolve that, of course, but yeah, I'm not sure why he didn't. Michael Caudill was the one that was out looking at the property.
When, when did that happen?
Oh, it happened last Wednesday, I believe.
Okay.
You know, it was recent, so.
I drove down by the deck. I didn't see a number on each lot. Is that required?
No, we normally do, but usually when we stop the lots when they're done, we'll pin them, and then once it's approved, and then write on the stops themselves.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I did speak with, with the T, with TDEC, with, and he did explain to me that they were approved, and he said that, you know, I told him, I said, they would like to see that on the map. And they sent the map, the, the extra one that I had laying in your all's area, but his signature still wasn't on them, so that was kind of my fault. That I, I need to make sure that Mr. Murphy knows that we need those signatures, not just approval, but, you know, he sent the maps, but he didn't put the signature on them. So I know this is the second time this has... Uh, I know this is the second time this has come this way in front of the committee, and I'm sorry, but we will see that we can take care of that with Mr. Murphy before it happens again.
One, one more time, you may have to stay after school, Tommy.
I won't pass.
Thank you, Tommy.
Yes.
Uh, is there any, anything other thing omitted? Uh, in my study, I saw none. Can we approve this, can, can, uh, we approve this plat based upon getting that final signature on it?
And that would be my motion.
Okay. Motion is second. All in favor say aye. I'm sorry. And your point is?
First, I wanted to leave to be able to file with and deliver to Tommy the signature pages that we supposedly delivered that were signed by a resident in support of our statement of objection. But the other is, based on your comment before, that this was a matter of whether or not the boxes had been checked for purposes of a plat that is submitted through approval. And I have some comments to make as to whether or not the boxes were, has to be heard by the commission on it. And then, you can go ahead and take your vote, I just want to have the opportunity to make this comment. That's all.
The guide we go by doesn't allow for that, um, and I appreciate that. You can file anything with Tommy, um, but we have a motion as second on the floor. All in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise, and thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. Carlisle, I get, I normally would give these to you, but we'll, we'll get these signed, okay? All right, next. Next, we have before us a preliminary plat approval for Bullseye Investments Subdivision, fourteen oh five Slot Creek Road. All right, this is a preliminary plat. Okay?
Richard Kent, AM, Savannah.
Okay, Mr. Kent? What can you share with us?
We're just asking for preliminary approval on this site out here, they're just following the rules.
Right. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Kent? Have you, have you looked at this, Josh?
Yes, um, we recommend approval.
You recommend?
Yes.
Josh has looked at it and recommends approval?
And this is preliminary only. Anytime you, infrastructure is involved, you have to have the preliminary plat approved prior to them building the new roads and installing utilities and everything. So, we have gotten construction drawings on all that, and we're, it's been sent out. Clint Harrison did the civil work for it, so, but the preliminary plat is in order, in order. Like I said, it's, it won't be recorded until it comes back before this board and all the infrastructure's in place.
Yeah, and, you know, we're, we're pinning the soils, the soils may change the amount of lots that we do put on this thing, but other than that, you know, because, and we will get Brian to sign it.
Motion to approve, I need a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Okay, motion passes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kent. Mr. Kent, do you want these copies? Okay, that finishes up the, uh, Planning Commission agenda. We'll pause this for a minute, and we'll begin with the, uh, BZA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy, for catching me there, but we need a motion to, uh. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed likewise. All right, we can now adjourn and.
Hey, Tommy. Uh, the, uh. Hamlin County Board is owning appeals to order, and, um, welcome again. We need to elect, uh, officers, we need a chairman and a vice chairman, and a secretary. Might even need a sergeant-at-arms, I don't know, but. Okay? We're going to do the same as we did with the Planning Commission. You're going to nominate Mr. Gray?
Mr. Gray and, uh, Charlie Anderson, Bill Hicks, secretary.
All right, have a motion on the floor, any discussion or comments? Let's vote on the, uh, motion by Ms. Cahill. All in favor of her motion?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and first matter will be to, uh, firstly ask, is there any public comments? Again, anybody want to come forward, public comments? Seeing none, let's move forward with, with the zoning appeals, and first step is to approve our minutes from our meeting of August fourth. I have a motion to approve. Uh, that would be, uh, active in this, uh, for you in the courtroom, you think some of us are asleep, and we might be, but, uh, with the three officers that are on the BZA board is what they've elected, so. You second that, Bill, thank you. Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward then, with our first order is front setback variance request for twenty-nine sixty Turley Bridge Road, mobile home placement, uh, based on topography. In some way representing that.
Hey, good afternoon. Jessica Doris with Clayton Homes.
Okay. Uh, Joseph, are you a resident in Hamlin County?
I'm not.
Okay, that's fine, I'll just.
Our property owner is here.
Yes. The property owner? Okay, who's going to speak on behalf of this request? Okay, would you raise your hand, repeat after me? I solemnly swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I solemnly swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, thank you. Is this your bodyguard here, or what is this?
He is the bodyguard. He, he's, uh, our project manager at Clayton Homes, so he, we both know a little bit about the property.
Will he be speaking to it?
Uh, a little bit, yes.
Okay, uh, you come forward. Your name is Tony?
My name is Tony.
What's the last name?
Harville.
Okay, thank you for the record. Uh, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead and ask us why you're making this request.
Um, we're making this request, we have started work on this property, uh, we've done a septic system. And putting in the septic system, we've created a big slope in the background for the topography of, uh, getting this house far enough back to where if we go further back, we're on top of the septic system. So, we're a little closer to the property line than we thought we would be, and we're just requesting a sixteen-foot variance.
Sixteen-foot variance, okay. Have you been before this commission before with this project?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, do you have a, you have a picture of this property and, uh, the placement, et cetera? We can see. Tommy, could I get you to go to the, the door and ask those folks to move on? Break room's somewhere else. Thank you.
We have a, I'm what I handed you, a plot map, uh, one of the original surveys.
Can it, can, can you approach here and, and give, and mark this for us, because, uh, it's real ambiguous? Uh, Charlie and, uh, Bill, would you come here, please?
How big is that lot?
Kay, Kay, could you come as well? For the same thing? Okay. Which lot is it? I'm sorry? I'm listening, I'm listening, listen, Joseph.
Okay, so what is the, um. This is the, that's kind of where we have placement of the home. We already have the septic system installed.
You already got the septic installed?
It's installed, yes.
So, what you're saying is?
We can't move this back any forward at least.
You feel, if you fill it to put the house on, then you're covering up your fill lines? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Is that a, is that a conventional unit or a chamber?
Uh, it is a chamber.
So, you're asking sixteen foot?
Sixteen foot, yes. Basically, this is the back of property, but right here, it slopes, goes straight down, and the septic fill lines are down here, the tanks over here.
You, you, you know you should have got approval before you put your fill lines in now, don't you?
We understand that, yeah.
That's a, that could be a costly mistake for you.
So, this is all cut? This is not filled?
All filled, yeah.
This is all filled? That's the way I see it. I just ask the question for clarity. It's all your septic's here?
Our septic's, uh, on the, on the back, where it starts sloping down here, our fill lines are back here.
Okay.
And so, we've got the house pushed all the way back to this edge.
What does this line represent, how many, how much dirt that you had disturbed here? What is that?
This right here is from, I took this picture from the road, so this is actually, um.
Virgin dirt.
Property line down here.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where, where this unit gets set, here or here?
Where the house is going to be?
Mm-hmm.
So, this circle right here, I'm going to tell you a picture, that's a footer hole, what we're going, that would be the edge of the house, and this would be, um, there's another edge of the house here, and this would be the front of the front porch. Which is on, but that's, the front of the front porch is from the sixteen foot. The house would be twenty foot.
The road, the road's up about six foot hard and the building pad in it.
Yeah, absolutely.
If a car comes off in there, it's going to be right in there, isn't it?
Yeah, so the porch would be right in here, and that's the sixteen foot we're asking from the porch.
Here has sixteen.
From the porch. It'd be twenty foot for the house, but we thought.
And what's, how deep's the porch?
Four foot.
Four feet. What's the total acreage of that lot?
It's a big lot.
Big lot.
It's two point oh seven.
It was just a steep lot, I remember.
Yeah, it's a steep lot. It's, we just put a house for his son right next to him, on lot two. He's got a house there. That's a lot of variance here.
Is that a, that's a three-bedroom mobile home?
Three-bedroom, yeah, yes, sir. It's a.
Single.
Twenty-eight wide, fifty-six long.
Well, the only reason we could approve it, if we do approve it, is to our degree.
It's, that's, that's why I'm requesting this, we need to talk about the issue.
But there's, there's no further that you can get this back?
Not without, without putting more dirt in there, coming up to fill the lines.
Once again, I understand that's, um, asking first is better. Okay, uh, you can return back. Thank you. Thank you. Well, you've seen, you've seen, uh, you've seen and asked the questions. Any other question to it? The request is for variance, sixteen foot. Do I have a motion for or against that? Or a recommendation?
I'm going to make a motion to grant these parties a lot. And these are extra-large lots. Hopefully, the next time we, across this, that you'll do your homework and. My motion is to grant a sixteen-foot front variance here to the park. And that's. We have to give a reason to grant the grant. That's my motion. Otherwise, it's unusable.
Do I have a second for that motion? Okay, we have a motion of seconds on the floor. We'll vote, uh, to approve the variance. Say aye?
Aye.
To oppose, say no?
No.
No. Okay, the request has been denied. Thank you. You'll need to clear, you'll need to get, uh, some, some way, you may have to put, I, I can't give you a, I can't give you a real, uh, what the remedy is. There's op, several options that I think you, y'all probably know. Okay, thank you for coming. What's, what's the other one? I have another one somewhere. I have another one somewhere. Okay, this next one is Stephen Troubridge, or Troubridge, how do you, Troubridge, thank you. So, state your name, so I'll know what it is again, and, um.
It's Stephen Troubridge.
Thank you, Stephen. And your request today is?
I'm asking for a variance to be able to build, so that my garage would only be about twenty feet from the street. Um, so it's, it'd be closer than, a lot closer than what was originally planned. I run into a lot of problems with, uh, this construction. Uh, I, I actually brought, I don't know if I can show you, but I brought this picture of the lot that I bought, like, twenty-one years ago, to build on, by the lake. I'm just now able to do it. So, when we tried to clear, it's a nicely sloped lot, it looked like, uh, going down to the lake, and it looked like it was plenty big enough. Uh, what we ran into is when we started excavation, uh, turns out, the developer of the property, it's Turner's Landing, by the way, if you haven't heard anything about that one yet, in Russellville. Um, the developer, when he cut in all the roads, he cut down all the trees, he put them all in a giant pile, burned them all, left about, I don't know, five or six feet of ash. Then all the ones that didn't burn, he piled on top of that, and then he took all the debris from the project, piled it on top of that, and then put some topsoil and made it look like this beautiful lot that I bought. So, when we removed topsoil to, to start pour our foundation, we found things like this, a bunch of buried trees, on top of about five or six feet of ash. And by the time they dug it all out, our excavation went from six thousand dollar budget to forty-six thousand dollar bill. And what we were left with was this giant canyon after they dug it all. So, then we had to bring in a hundred and sixty-two loads of dirt to try and build it back up again. And what we ended up with was this pad to build on. Now, to be able to build even the smallest house allowed in the community, we have to build the garage, we have to be twenty feet from the street. Because of the, you can see where the silt fence is here, at the bottom of the dirt pile? That's the ten eighty line, so I can't go past that, um, even though my property goes further. And then on this side, there's a natural drainage on this side of the dirt pile, um, that has to stay there for the water coming down from the hills above. So, I'm not allowed to go beyond that sideways. On the other side, I have to be within ten feet of that property line, so the. On the other side, I have to be within ten feet of that property line, so the other bottom, the side, the other side of the dirt hill is right at the property line. So I'm really constricted to be on that pad as all the space I have. Now, I'm building the smallest house they allow in the community, which is about sixteen hundred square feet. So my problem is that I've run into all the borders, I have, from the property lines on both sides and the drainage ditch, um... I'm building, like I said, the smallest one allowed in the community, and the only way to build it is if the garage is about twenty feet from the street. The front porch would be six feet back from that, and then the body of the home would be about thirty feet back. It's the one and only way to make it fit. Originally, I was supposed to have a walkout basement and all those kinds of things, but because of, we had, because of this problem and all this excavation and building up, I, I will no longer have a basement, I'll just have a back porch on, on the back, it'll hang over the dirt pile. So we've already lost a lot of space, we can't go any further back because of the ten eighty line, and I, the only thing I can do is go forward closer to the road, and it would be the garage portion that would be twenty feet from the street, and the rest of the house would be set back further, further than that, uh, close to thirty feet. But it's the only way to make it fit, and it's the smallest house I'm allowed to build in there, so I've, I've run out of options, I, I looked into different configurations, but nothing else fits on the pad. And we're required to have an attached two-car garage, so I can't eliminate that or put it next to it, because I've already run into the, I have the drainage ditch that I have to leave there on that side. So I really, I'm out of options, other than just moving forward toward the street a little bit, it's the only way I can build it all.
Let me ask you a question, let me, let me ask you, bring those pictures here, and, uh, Lord, if you'd come look at those again, let me ask you a question.
May I say something?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I've out there and looked at, he leaves down in the bottom cul-de-sac, and the water comes down, that drainage ditch has to be there, there's no, there's no other ill finance about it, it's got to be there.
Uh, my question's gonna be, is that, is that drainage ditch, um, movable to help, but it's really not gonna make a difference, is it? Yeah, I was just thinking if you, if it came over here, if you moved us over, but that really doesn't help you there.
But, um, that would buy me a little bit of width, but it wouldn't buy me any debt.
Can y'all see that?
I mean, it looked like a beautiful lot from the beginning.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you know, about twenty, twenty years ago.
So this is where we are today?
That's where we are today, uh, where we've been for a couple of months, uh, waiting, and that's all that hundred and sixty-two loads of dirt, uh, to fill that, to bring the house up high enough.
And I know this is, isn't the scale, um, but...
It's not, no, it's not the scale.
It's not the scale, but...
But the lines are accurate.
But this won't, um, this can't turn anyway, or slide on back?
I really can't, because if I, if I turn it, if I, this is the part that's closer to the street, this is the only issue here, the rest is pretty far back.
But you got this back porch.
Yeah, which, which will hang kinda over the dirt, it'll hang over the edge of the dirt here, the back porch, it was supposed to be a walkout basement, now it's gonna just be a porch that hangs over, because we don't have room.
Go ahead, Bill.
Is your driveway coming in here?
Yes.
Can, is there no way you can put a house on there, it's got a side drive in, come in on this side, into your garage?
Uh, well, it's so steep, there's no way to do it, plus I'm already at the property line on both sides.
Let's see, let's see, just a second, let's see, let's check here. My answer, question, Bill?
There's not enough room for a side entrance, because I got the drainage ditch on one side, and I got the neighbor's property on the other.
What's this pile, is this pile here gonna be moved?
Uh, that is on my neighbor's lot, we, that's the stuff we dug up.
Oh, so you don't own this lot here, where this pile of stuff's at?
Yeah, no, I don't.
Where's your line at?
I got permission to, uh...
Where's your line at?
My line is...
Right down to here?
My line is at the edge of the dirt pile, we've brought the, the line tapers down to...
Your side property line?
Yeah.
Right, right here?
Uh, I'm upside down right now, so...
We are too.
Um, so, yeah, right here on, where'd you see this big dirt pile?
Uh-huh.
It, it's before that, it's right on the edge, see how this tapers down on this side, that tapers down on that side as well, at the very bottom of the taper is the property line. So I run out of space on that side, and I have the drainage ditch on this side, and I'm at the ten eighty line at the bottom of this that I can't go past. So the only thing that can make this smaller house fit is to go over.
Where did you have intentions of putting your fill line at?
They must, sewer out there.
Oh, was that sewer?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So they need, I understand they need ten-foot access to the power lines and all that stuff, which is still there. And there's be another ten feet beyond that, and then the porch would be further back, it's only the garage portion that would be twenty feet from the street, the rest of it would still be set back. And there aren't any issues as far as like crowding the street, uh, because there's nobody built across the street, if they do, it'd be way up on a hill, so it won't be, like, making the street feel small. And also, um, there's, uh, there's, what else is there? But, I mean, it shouldn't impact anybody as far as...
Where's that sewer, where's that sewer line at, in the back or the front?
This sewer line, it'll be a bit low.
So you'll have to pump it?
Yeah. We have a, a central septic system in Turner's Landing, but we still have to have a, a pump and a holding tank, um, that will be also installed. And I, I even looked into buil, doing a two-story house instead of one to have a smaller footprint, but what happens there is, I go below the minimum square footage I'm allowed to have. I have to have the attached two-car garage, that's mandatory, and I have to, if I build two stories, I have to have a minimum twelve hundred square feet on the first floor, I wouldn't be able to have that if I had the garage there, so I, I, I'm really constrained, I, this...
Can't slide the house back a little bit more toward the ten eighty line?
Well, the ten eighty line is right at the bottom of the dirt pile now.
I just took a picture of it, I think there's a little...
Is this silt fence on the ten eighty?
This silt fence...
The silt fence?
No, that, the side one, oh yeah, that bottom one, is below the ten eighty, the ten eighty is actually right at the bottom of the dirt.
So that's ten seventy-four or something.
So this is, you couldn't slide your house back toward the ten eighty line at all?
I can't, no, and see the, the pile of dirt starts here, where this line is, it tapers down to where the ten eighty is.
What, what he's got is, this back porch impedes that, in other words, it's, he's sticking over, but you'd have, he'd have to remove this porch to make it work.
Even then, the porch hangs over the dirt pile, so even that wouldn't change it really, because the house would go right back, the, the foundation would go right to the back of the top of the dirt pile, and then the porch will hang over the dirt pile.
See, I was wondering if you took, I was wondering if you, I was wondering if you took away part of that porch.
No, we shrunk the porch already, it was supposed to be sixteen feet, we shrunk it back to twelve.
Well...
Yeah, it was supposed to be sixteen, we shrunk it back to twelve to make it work. But even then, the back porch will hang over the dirt and the ten eighty line, it won't pass the ten eighty line, but, you know, we can't do that, but it will hang over the dirt, and the front, the foundation will come right up to the edge of the, the dirt there. Matter of fact, they have to, we had to either hire a structural engineer to come in and evaluate all this, and they're gonna dig big trenches all along the borders of this thing and put global fill in to reinforce it, to make it strong enough to build the house on. Yeah, but I, I had a few different explanations of what the step back is, if somebody's going to use ten feet of ability and then thirty feet, and then some people said, no, it's ten feet from the street. So, all I know, like, we, the four literally houses are twenty feet from the street, I don't know how, how it all works, but, that's the only way to make that one, that's, that's, it's like, it's a small, I'm gonna go in there.
Mr. Chairman, I want that motion to be, uh, just to, uh, change, but, but, that's back variance, use of positive, uh, restrictions, uh, the subdivision.
They, they give me... Yeah, they give you their approval for it. I knew this was what happened.
They cannot lower the house, unfortunately.
I, I know, I'm the smallest I can build. I, I wish I could, I tried, someone just raised, they could work through that, I redesigned it twenty-five years ago.
Mr. Chairman, have, have we given any other...
Uh, we have, and that's, uh, the...
Variants, isn't it, some of it?
A whole bunch.
Quite a few.
From a street, or?
Quite a few.
From a street, that one? Oh, yeah. Okay, now, who is this one, that, which one is it?
It's just down in that cul-de-sac, next to the water down there.
Okay.
It's one of the smallest lots depth-wise, a lot, most of the lots are much deeper, but it's like in a curve in the road too, and it's sort of high shape, there's a lot of limitations, it doesn't go that deep, and then it's sort of high shaped to begin with, and it's got the drainage ditch, and it's got all these things. If we had just dug below topsoil and been able to build the house, we would have plenty of room, it's just that the developer, by doing this, burying all the stuff there, just ruined everything.
And you didn't know that?
No, I bought it over twenty years ago, we just started to develop, uh, in April.
Okay. All right, uh, the next we have Connor, uh, Fedora? Thank you. Come and tell us what you're interested in doing.
Uh, so, I wanna say, a few months ago, I applied for a business license, uh, recently graduated from the Storm Business Institute, used my DI bill, um, I have my certificate here with me. Uh, I'm just trying to start again, something in business on the side to help my family live a little bit more comfortably in the economy, and use the skills I learned in school to build a passion that I love.
So you're looking for a customary home occupation?
Yes, in order for me to go to the next step, which is to apply to the ATF for a federal firearms license, uh, the government, the federal government does not require a business license to be on the application, but Tennessee state law does, to operate within the county.
Okay. Any comments? Are you gonna be doing resale or, uh, retail?
Uh, a little bit of both, my main goal is to do, um, professional build kits from manufacturers, and then sell to other authorized dealers, like, um, for example, Tommy Guns would be a good, uh, possible, um, I'm gonna go over here on a fair little public speaking, um, I guess, retailer for me. Uh, I just don't feel comfortable doing personal sale-to-sales with the way that the world is going and everybody wanting unobtainable items, uh, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
So, so you're saying you wouldn't be doing retail sale out of your house?
No, I would be, operating in, uh, my garage that I have, uh, set up.
I guess what I'm asking is, that will the public be coming to pick up, uh, things that you sell?
No, sir.
You have any signs up there or anything?
Uh, no, I'm still in the process of doing marketing and things like that, um, just basically doing like a little Facebook page of like builds that I do, that I sell to dealers, and just for advertisement purposes. Like I said, I don't, I got two daughters at home, one's two, one's only a month old, and my wife is still postpartum, I don't meet a lot of people at my house, but, uh, it's just more comfortability for me, uh, to instill a safe environment for my kids. Uh, I don't want, uh, a lot of unfamiliar faces and traffic on my street, so it would be better for me to do the kits online with the FFL, because then I could transport them to the dealers directly and cut out traffic altogether.
I know the name of your business is different than your name.
Uh, yes, uh, for the application, I had to pick something, and I wanted something catchy, um, it was a toss-up between a nickname that an army buddy gave me and, um, something that I watched from one of my favorite TV shows, so I went with the TV show.
How much area of your home would this occupy?
Uh, it's a one-day car garage, probably no bigger than from the tables here.
So what percentage of your home would you say that is?
I'd probably say less than five percent maybe.
I'm just going through to check off, to make, to make it possible.
What about ammunition, you, you not filled with that, are you?
No, I do not have the means to do reloads, and if I was, uh, they'd be for personal use only, which, under the Second Amendment, is completely legal, as long as I do not make a profit out of it. So, again, with my daughters running around, I don't feel comfortable having ammunition parts out that they could possibly access. Everything is in locked containers in my house, but just the machines themselves are delicate, and I have to use time and things regularly, and it involves a lot of heavy machine presses, I don't want them...
Let me ask one more question. Uh, is there any restrictions in your, uh, subdivision covenants, now, I mean, I know you're R O A zone, now, operating a business in your home?
I think the only restriction would be live fire testing, which I can go to any authorized range to do so, and, um, my wife's family does have private land that they've also authorized me to do testing on.
Are there restrictions in your, in your subdivision?
Not that I'm aware of.
You understand what he's asking? He's asking, is, is there any covenants in your, uh, subdivision that would disallow you having a business out of your home? Is that, is that, I'm sorry, Bill?
I don't really know enough about this gun business and the housing and residential areas. Got a little bit more checking on this, so...
Good, um, I would also like to give you time to check in your subdivision to see if there's any covenants, and, um, and give you an opportunity to come back with that in front of us, uh, in our next, uh, month, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to ask, staff office, how many of these businesses, similar businesses, we have in our family?
Do you, you understand his request? Okay.
I mean, as far as use goes, we've had similar stuff in the city, and we just consider it retail sales, so it falls under, any, I mean, as long as they agree to all the terms and conditions, we treat it as a retail use, off-premise retail use. Um, and the ATF, they do require local approval prior to issuing any type of license for this.
Yes, I agree.
Cause I've gotten, um, phone calls from the ATF before, it's always a little alarming, we'll see that pop, and then they just need, make sure we're good with it, so...
I just wanna be fair to him and not, um, him, uh, it gets approved or disapproved and, and he doesn't have the information, he goes back and he can't do it in his, his subdivision.
Yeah, and you probably can look at your deed or title and go to, or go to Jim Kostas' office at the courthouse, they can pull and see if there's any covenants for your piece of property.
We just don't want you to go down the wrong path and, and regret it.
Uh, like I said, from the research that I gathered in school, um, and talking to Mr. McKinney from time to time on it, it was just to come here for the, uh, opportunity to represent.
You, you did the right thing, you did the right thing.
Question, is that where he lives? It's gonna be at this nineteen-eighty-four Doug Street? Is that a subdivision? Or is it just neighboring? It is a subdivision.
So I, I think, I think, thank you, good question. We, we, I think we would be doing you wrong. We need that piece of information. If you could get that to Tommy, and then Tommy will take you from there.
Okay, and what office do I need to speak to on that?
The Plan Commission. Tommy.
Okay. I'm making a motion. We put him on the agenda for next month also.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Look forward to seeing you. Thank you. All right. I believe that has it all, unless y'all have something else that comes up. We stand adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned. Second. Thank you. Josh, thank you. Come see us again. Josh.